Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the month of May. You are here for the Town of Bladensburg's May 8th work session for the town council. Thank you for tuning in live or watching the recording of tonight's meeting. We are now called to order and we'll proceed with the first item, or sorry, the second item on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember McBride. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
I.
I. Any nays? The "I" has it. Thank you so much. The next item for tonight is the approval of the minutes. Just make sure. Mr. Charnovich? Yep, there you are. Yes.
Yes. Hello, Mayor. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
None for tonight, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll have to table the approval of the April minutes until the June meeting.
Yes, please.
Just making a note here. Okay, thank you for that. Well, the good thing is it gives us a minute more for the next item because we do have a couple of special guests joining us tonight. I'm very honored to introduce Mr. Michael Gannon, who is a longtime advocate for the library system in Prince George's County. He is now serving as our acting co-chief executive officer for the Prince George's County Memorial Library System, and he will provide us with an update about the Bladensburg Library construction. Just not to bury the headline, but it's part of that beautiful picture behind him. Mr. Gannon, welcome. And I do understand you need to share your screen. So, Mr. Gray, if you could just make sure he's able to do so.
Thank you. I do have a presentation. I've got several good pictures to show you rendering. So if I could share my screen, let me see if it'll let me. Yes, it is. Let me find my screen. You just give me a minute. Here we go. So, um, thank you very much for inviting me to be here. I am very excited. I have a lot of, of things to share with you. So, um, as the mayor said, I'm the acting co-CEO of the library temporarily. My permanent job is Chief Operating Officer for Support Services. And one of the great things I get to do is oversee our capital projects. So, um, the Bladensburg Branch Library, here's a picture of the rendering of the exterior without me sitting in front of it, but I'm sure you've seen it as you pass along. 450, it's really starting to come together now. We've been joking that the inside is in, being more finished than the outside, but now that the windows are going in, um, you can really see it. Uh, it is three times the size of the original building, and, um, we're actually able to use the second floor unlike the original building, which we couldn't use the second floor. So this is our first facility to be certified LEED silver, and the architects tell us that possibly we can get a LEED gold out of this. Now, our newer libraries Laurel and Hyattsville are, um, built to a LEED silver, but they were never certified. So this actually will be a certified library. And, um, we, we know that the, um, the Bladensburg community is, is very much into, um, sustainable features. So we will have rooftop solar panels, permeable pavers. We will have electric vehicle charging stations, drought-resistant landscaping, and energy-efficient HVAC systems and LED lighting inside. I have a couple, um, renderings that I'm going to show you a little bit later, but all these things now are what we did not have in the original building. So there will be a meeting room, which we never had. There'll be a learning lab. We're going to have a oral history project, the equipment to do oral history project. We're going to have a demonstration portable kitchen, and, uh, we will have laptops for computer learning. Uh, there will be a vending cafe as you go in, um, in the lobby. A two-sided fireplace. It'll be inside and outside, so you'll be able to see it, um, from the street as well as inside. A quiet room for studying and three study rooms. One of the things we found is that there's, uh, we never have enough study rooms, um, for our customers. So we've got three study rooms, um, in, uh, this branch. We have a comfort room for nursing mothers as well as a family restroom and 42 public access computers. The original, the exist old library had, um, nine computers. That's all we could shoehorn in there. And then we're doing two interior art and public places commissions. You probably are aware that all county construction projects require 1% of the construction cost to go to public art. So we are having two interior art public commissions, uh, in the new Bladensburg. So, uh, here's a rendering as you come in the door. Uh, to the right is the USS Prince George, which is the children's area. It's an actual, the prow of a ship, and the, on the inside of that are computers for the children. And then also we can use that, the librarians can use that as the program room. Um, the service desk is right ahead. The teen zone is, um, uh, within viewing of the librarians at the service desk. And then, um, you can kind of see the upper, um, area, the meeting rooms, the learning lab, the quiet room, and a set of restrooms are, and the staff work rooms are all on the second floor. We don't usually like doing a two-story library because it's harder to staff and secure, but, um, we really wanted to stay on the site where the original library was. That's a really good visible site. So, um, we did do a two-story, um, library here. And then this is on that two sto- second story looking down. So you can see the three study rooms, the, the windows above the study rooms, that's where the quiet room is. You can see, um, the fireplace, uh, to the right and, um, all the book stacks. There are, as you see, as you drive by those, um, they call them the sales. They are all curtain walls where customers can sit and use computers, use their laptops, or just study. Uh, here's some existing photographs of construction. So, um, you're looking down up into the second floor on the left, and then you're looking down from the second floor to the, um, main level. And you're actually, um, looking as if you were to come in down that second exit, second end, second photograph. Um, our tentative, this is what you want to hear, I'm sure. Our tentative opening date is early fall, probably after school starts. So, um, we've had some issues with supply chain, uh, as I'm sure, and if you're doing any construction projects, you know that we're, there's some supply chain issues. We had, um, glass evidently was a big, uh, supply chain issue. And if you've driven by the library, you've seen the size of the sheets of glass that, that are going in the new library. Transformers are really difficult to get evidently, but we have the transformer where there's permanent power. That's a good thing. Um, all the furniture has been ordered, all the shelving has been ordered. All the books, uh, are in the process of being ordered, uh, so they'll be ready. We're going to have a brand-new opening day collection. Uh, so everything will be brand-new inside, all the computers, uh, everything. So that's a neat thing. The staff, we will have a larger staff, so we were given funding for additional positions so that, uh, we will be able to staff this building. So we will, um, the original staff are currently in the temporary site. They will be moving in here. We're going to close the temporary site, uh, the middle of June because the lease is up at the end of June. So we're going to close the site so we can prepare to, uh, give the, um, the site back to the landlord. And, um, then we will also start, um, hiring the additional staff. We probably, what'll happen is existing staff will want to transfer from other branches, and then we'll just, uh, backfill those positions. Whenever we open a new branch, uh, existing staff always want to come and, uh, transfer. So, um, what we don't tell, um, every, anyone is about the, um, the positive, uh, features for the staff. Um, the, the staff in the old building were in, all together in one room. That was their, um, their lounge, that was their break room, that was their office, that was everything was in the book drop, opened right into it. So they will actually now have a real workroom and a real break room and their own restrooms. So, um, that's a good thing for the staff. That's a real morale builder. So we're happy for that as well. Uh, you can follow along the, um, construction through our PGCMLs builds page. So on our website, uh, there is PGCMLs builds that has all our building projects. And the things that are there are, um, um, the plans, uh, the furniture plans, so people can see what that looks like. The, um, photographs, we take photos. We have a construction meeting every two weeks. So we take photos and post them on our Flickr site so, um, people can follow along. And then there's also other major announcements, if any. So we don't have our grand opening date yet. We don't like to give months. I get in trouble if I say a month because, uh, people expect it, but with the way construction goes, things are though, are now moving along. We don't have any long lead items that we're worried aren't going to get here in time. So I think we can safely say that, um, uh, early fall, um, after school starts would be a, a, a good time for that. So that is pretty much my, um, presentation. Thank you for your continued support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can, that you may have.
I'm so glad you mentioned that. Uh, so I do want to thank you, uh, and the team for providing space for the staff. You have a wonderful team that support the Bladensburg Library Branch, and so it's good to hear that you're accommodating their needs so they feel comfortable and excited to be in this new space. Um, one thing I did want to ask was, um, with respect to where things are and if it would be possible for the town council, along with our, uh, county council member Jolene Ivy, to get a behind-the-scenes tour. She and I, a couple weeks back, had just talked briefly about potentially doing something like that, just so we can peek behind the curtain before the big reveal in the early fall.
Yes. Uh, I have to break, uh, everybody down to little groups though, because the county insurance is very strict. So, um, if I'll reach out to you, we could take three or four people one at a time. You still have to have, um, uh, hard hats and vests, and I can supply all those. And, um, ugly-looking construct, you know, your, your ugliest-looking walking shoes, um, you'll have to wear. No open-toe shoes. So, um, but yes, I'll reach out to you and, um, we can give you maybe beginning of June, um, end of May, you can have a behind-the-scenes. Yes, we can do that. Um, I'm also, um, going to be filming a, um, hard hat librarian too. I did it at the beginning of, um, the, before we demoed the old building. So I'm going to do one, you know, oh, probably toward the end of the, um, uh, month too. So I'd like, yeah, I'd like to get your comments too, after you see it. I always like to,
Yeah.
I don't like comments until you see it, and then it's, um, I mean, it is really, in fact, the artist that's doing the interior, um, art piece on the wall, it's a glass, um, a glass feature on the wall, said, "This looks like a cathedral." And I was, "Yes, it's a cathedral of learning." So, um, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, and Mr. Gannon, our time is fleeting, so I want to quickly take a few questions, and then we do have to move on. Councilmember Blunt, thank you for your patience. I know your hand was up.
Um, I'm being greedy now, but the old books that you have, you had in the library, will you all be, can you donate those books? Because we would love them, we would love them here at Emerson House.
We're actually, um, giving, um, some, uh, giving the children's collection to the schools, but I don't see why we can't, um, give you some of the ones that are coming in from the, um, the, uh, temporary site. You know, do you know the, um, the supervisor there, Deborah Capone?
Yes, she was here today.
Oh, was she? Okay, well, just tell her that I said you could have some. So there you go.
Okay, thank you.
You already planned this, didn't you?
There you go. Very well timed. Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Okay, real, uh, really quick. Um, we're very excited, wonderful-looking building, can't wait until the tour. Just a question. Will, uh, you all be in, reaching out and employing, um, Bladensburg residents?
Yes, we always, um, you know, we don't specifically, we have to do it over the whole county, but our job openings are listed on our pa- on our, um, page, and they will be needing clerical aides and pages, so they usually recruit those locally. So yes, for those positions.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Route.
Thank you, Mayor James. Uh, Mr. Gannon, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Very, um, can't wait to take the behind-the-scenes tour. I wanted to, um, I had a similar question to a resident that placed a question in the chat. Can you explain what, um, LEED silver and LEED gold is for our residents who may be tuning in or online? Thank you.
Sure, sure. So, um, LEED is le- leadership and energy efficiency, and it is, uh, a national, I guess it's an international certification to show that you have, um, done, uh, met their, their criteria for an energy-efficient building. So, um, some of the things that we, we got point, you get, and you get points. So we got points for the, um, the lighting inside, for the solar panels, for the permeable pavers, for the fact that we were reusing an existing, um, site, and that for when the building was torn down, they had to, um, use, the, some of the, the, the items could not go far in a landfill. So you have to make sure that those were taken nearby, um, that you were having a lot of light, that you have art in there. So it's, um, there's three levels, silver, gold, and platinum. Platinum is the hardest to get. Um, I was, um, I was impressed that maybe we'll get a gold, um, to show, but it just, it's just like a, um, a national certification that, um, you are, have a green building and a sustainable building. So, um, you know, to get a platinum, you have to do things like, um, have composting toilets. And I was like, "I'll just take a gold. I'll, I will, um, stick with the gold." And we're not going to do composting.
We agree with that.
Some of the things you have to do to get a platinum are like, "No, I'll pay us. Thanks. A gold is good enough."
Yeah.
So then we'll get, we'll get to have a big, uh, sort of, you get a big plaque you put in the lobby.
Oh, that's nice.
It's neat, yeah.
And one more question. How large will be the meeting room upstairs?
The meeting room will hold 75. It actually looks like it holds than that. I mean, I was in there the other day, and I was like, "Wow, this is big." And there's a, um, there's a pantry there, and, um, it, um, it's a, it, it's a nice size. It's amazing compared to what they never had before.
Well, thank you for getting this group here, as well as the rest of our residents who are viewing online, excited about this new project. It is a long time coming, but absolutely 1,000% worth the wait. So, Mr. Gannon, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for the wonderful update, and I'll look forward to connecting so we can, as you said, stagger two groups and, uh, get some tours scheduled, and appreciate you being open to that idea, and wish you a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. I'll be in touch.
Absolutely. Take care. Bye-bye. So at this time, we'll move forward with the next appearance on tonight's agenda, which is, uh, Mr. Sam Parker from Amen Trust, and this is regarding the Boswick House discussion. So, Mr. Parker, we will turn it over to you at this time. I see Mr. Parker's box.
Okay, I'm trying to get on with the video. Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Um, I have, I have a few slides. Uh, can you screen share, or you, or you can pull up what?
Sure, sure. Mr. Gray, could you please give Mr. Parker access to the screen share?
Okay. You know, it's interesting that we're talking about a new modern building in 2023, and I'm following right behind with a historic site built in 1784, 1748. I think it just shows the breadth of, um, what's, uh, what's here in, um, Bladensburg, which is a good thing. So, um, I hope you all can see my PowerPoint there. Um, I'm coming to you today. I want, I want to thank, uh, Mayor James and the council and the staff for allowing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Parker. It's really small on my end. I don't know about, and everybody else, but it's kind of small.
Yeah, Mr. Parker, it's in presentation view, um, where you see the preview of the next slide.
Yes.
Wondering.
Oh, I gotta get. Try F5. F5. Let me go back real quick.
Yeah, I think if you escape out of it and then, um,
I'll try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try F5 now? Yes.
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. So, let me go back to the beginning. Sorry about this. There we go. So, um, thank you all very much for giving us this, uh, this, uh, time to, to give you something to think about with Boswick and hopefully approve. But we think we are at a point now where we have talked before about the importance of, um, of Boswick. Um, not only because it's a historic site, uh, that's important to the town of Boswick, but also to the state and also to the larger community because of his, we've primarily talked about its, um, its physical, um, importance, and it's the beginning of, uh, Bladensburg and, uh, uh, the Battle of Bladensburg and things like that. But Boswick also offers the opportunity us to do, to do a lot of, a lot of original research and to bring out the stories of the long history, not only of what that physical building started to be and was originally, but also what it means for the growth of, of, of Bladensburg over time, its leadership, the residents, um, and those stories still need to be told, and that is part of Boswick too. It's just not, um, uh, an important historical, physical building, built in 1748, that represents, um, important people. But it's about everybody in Boswick, and, and we have to, and we have to dig out the stories, and that's part of where we're trying to go to. Um, of course, the town has owned it for over 20 years, and Amen Trust has kind of assisted the town in, in getting, um, various kinds of, uh, of, of grants. But we do believe that Boswick is an important house on the hill. It's the, it can be the people's house. Um, it can be some, it can be a place where not only people know the history, but they see it as their place to, to visit, to learn, and, and to use. And again, that's where we're trying to go, both in supporting what the town wants to do, um, and providing assistance to, uh, to get there. Um, see, I got stuck here.
Try hitting the spacebar.
Spacebar. Hmm.
There's that arrow at the bottom of their presentation.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. There we go.
All right.
Thank you. Um,
My pleasure.
I'd, I'd like to just briefly mention that we did do during the COVID, working with the community to try to develop, um, multiple uses for the whole property and the house. And there are, uh, there are significant opportunities. We did not come to a final conclusion as to what Boswick should be used for, but the overall theme was, was for sure a community use. Uh, a, a use that embraces, um, everyone. Now, what those specific uses are, uh, still needs to be worked on. But that does not preclude moving ahead with the next sta- the next stages for improvements in Boswick. And I'm saying that because no matter what the use, um, the community comes up with, um, and we do recognize that that process needs to continue and dive deeper, uh, into the, the ultimate use. There are things that, that not only should be done, but must be done if, if Boswick is going to be restored and moved to ultimately what you want it, what you, uh, would like it to be. And what we're proposing is a, um, is not to do, um, I don't want to say static, but, um, repairs that just stabilize the, the property, which needs to be done. But we want to do things that moves the needle ahead to the future. Because really, the, the ultimate goal of Boswick is to, is to create an environment, both the historical environment and educational environment, that becomes useful to, um, Boswick and Balt and, um, Bladensburg today. So what we are talking about doing is we're requesting $150,000 from, um, the town of Bladensburg, and we're recommending it to come from the pot of money that the town got from the state of Maryland for the, uh, restoration of Boswick, to do these following things. To, um, hire the, the experts that, um, looks at the structural condition of the building and the, and the outbuildings, to prepare a scope of work that sets the, uh, pathway of what needs to be done first, second, and third, and also the costs associated with doing that work. That's kind of critical in order for us to, to, uh, really start looking at the, ultimately, where the funds going, additional funds going to come from, when we'll need those, when, when we'll need those funds. To do that work, we need, um, restoration architects. We need engineers to look at the structure. Um, we need legal folks, folks to look at the, the, um, um, the easements that own the property and, and what can be done. We look at, um, potentially uses to, uh, what we have to go through in the permitting process. And all of those things have to be put together in a plan that moves us forward to the restoration. We are estimating that those, that particular segment of the cost is about $150,000. And we get that number because of the experience that we've had, um, in working with architects, working with some of the other buildings that we've worked on, uh, to give a, give us a range of what we think that initial cost, uh, cost will be. Um, so we're asking, uh, the town for Amen Trust to work in partnership with the town, um, to prepare proposals for architects, engineers, um, and various technical folks to give a full-fledged study of what the conditions are at, uh, at Boswick at this point in time, and what physical things need to be done. Heating, um, HVAC, um, plumbing, bathrooms, things like that. And, uh, what's the, what's the condition of the currently, and where do we have to take Boswick in order for it to be restored and ultimately put into, uh, uh, use, um, by the, by the public? And again, these things are not necessarily or totally dependent upon the use. A lot of these things need to be done no matter what. So, uh, we would handle the, um, um, people coming in to review the, the property for their proposals. We would go over the bid, the, the proposals that are submitted. Um, we, we would respond to any questions. We would negotiate and help, um, formalize the agreements with the contractors. We would manage the contracts from beginning till, till the end. We would coordinate the various, uh, disciplines that would have to come in. And ultimately, the findings of what needs to be done, when and how much would, would go back to the, will go back to the town for approval. So we are not, Amen Trust is not asking for money to pay ourselves. We are asking money specifically to pay the, the, uh, professional, uh, engineers, architects, um, and so forth, to do, uh, to do their work. We are agreeing to work in partnership to manage it, but not at a cost, uh, and at a cost to the town. And again, we think that cost should be, is around 150,000. I do want to put this caveat on, um, costs are going all over the place. And there is a need to, um, start directly talking to specific, um, um, con- contractors, experts, and the folks that we need to use in order to get a, a, a tight budget on where we have to, have to go. But this, I think, is a, is a good ballpark of the kind of money that we think that, uh, would be necessary to move, to move ahead. Uh, why Amen Trust? Why are we doing this? Um, it's the commitment of Amen Trust over our, um, we were formed in 1984. You know, I've probably been part of Amen Trust for 12, 13 years, and we have as our mission to restore and put back into an adaptive use the historic buildings of, um, of, of Bladensburg, understanding that the town is the driver of what the, what the vision is and where it wants to go. And we fit into that. We want to fit in with what your, what your vision, vision is. Um, right now, and I'm working with, uh, John Sauer, who was very Um, right now, and I'm working with, uh, John Sauer, who was very instrumental in doing the, um, uh, War of 1812 monument, taking it from conception to fundraising to, to build out, to all the stuff associated with that. I currently manage the two projects that, um, are coming toward, thank goodness, coming toward the end, the, um, with the, with the buttress, the archaeology project, which is, um, they have finished their work and they're writing up their final report, um, which is necessary in order to start the construction, the, uh, construction and rebuilding the buttress. So that's coming to an end. We have revitalized the board of, um, of, uh, of Amen Trust over the last year. We have, um, um, Renee Green, we have new board members, Diane, Diane Griffin. We have Steve Whites, we have Pam Geily, Susan McCutcheon, which is coming up for a vote to be part of the board at our next meeting on the 12th. So there's a, there's a whole new cast of characters. Antoinette Bruno is, is part of the board. Many of the folks that, um, part of the new board are, um, grounded in, in Bladensburg. Joe Rodriguez, for example, is a new member, new member of the board. I am proposed-
Mr. Parker, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So we're well past 10 minutes and I know you have a few more slides. I just wanted to give you a time check.
No, I'm at, I'm at, I'm really at the end. So, um, what I said before, just a summary, we, we want to do the, the necessary technical work that moves Boswick along. And again, that's the $150,000 is the cost that what we think it would take.
Great. Thank you for that overview and, um, for walking us through the presentation. I do want to open it up for, uh, questions from the council, uh, council member route.
Thank you, Mayor James. I just gotta be conscious to lower my hand. I did that. Um, so it was, um, thank you so much for this, uh, presentation. I definitely am support. I am in support of, um, you know, hopefully my colleagues will be able to, uh, support this effort with allocating the amount of money that you will need to get the engineers to come in and draw up a plan. Uh, I wanted to ask about, uh, one of the new grants that Governor, uh, Westmore announced that he wanted to increase the funding for the African-American Heritage Preservation Project. Um, he has a new annual appropriation of 5 million. Has the Amen Trust, um, saw that solicitation? I know it's going to be closing at the end of June or some, somewhere in June. And is that something that you think that, um, we should partner on to go after?
That's an interesting question. I am on the Maryland Historical Trust and so we do, do the final, um, approval of those, of those grants. Um, Boswick is, is a little bit different. Not to say it can't somehow weave, um, into that process, but most of those, uh, grants are for capital projects and they are specifically related to historic African-American sites. Now Boswick is associated with African-American history from the slavery point of view. Um, whether there are, whether there's something site-specific that we can apply on Boswick to that grant, we don't know because that history has not been, has not really been explored. And that's where we need to start. This is going to be a long process. Um, but what we're trying to do is to figure out those places where grant money is possible. And then just to be honest with you, over the past year, we've missed opportunities to apply for just regular, um, uh, grants. They aren't, you know, they aren't big grants, but you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, 50,000. So there's, there's a mo- and we have got to be on that train constantly. But this, this work of what do you, what are you asking for and for what specifically and how's it, how does it fit? Is what we got to find out. And we don't have that yet and this will do that. No, it's out there.
Thank you. Great. And then council member Brown and then I'll, um, go after you.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor James. I'm going to be very quick with this and, uh, thank you, Mr. Parker. Uh, you know, we've been, um, at this for a long time now. So hopefully, you know, maybe we will, there will be a little bit more progress. But in terms of the funding, is there a price breakdown that you can provide, um, supporting, supporting that cost? Because, you know, as we, um, lift the ass, but, you know, as we have to do our, um, our, our grant responsibility as well.
Um, that I must say we have to do specifically. We're using kind of like our general knowledge and some of the things that we've worked on before.
I get it. I understand. That's all just that, that's, and we just, we just kind of run out of time, a little bit of time. So I don't want to delay, but that, yeah, so that we have to do our grant responsibility and reporting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Brown. And I do agree, we've been at this for a while, but I do feel like we've turned a corner, Mr. Parker. And a huge reason of that is just the, um, the relationship, you know, just really progressing, particularly over the last few years as we work with Neighborhood Design Center to really talk about how do we bring this, this huge asset, historical asset more to the forefront of our community and tell the story of the house and the people who live there and the people who occupied the land before there was ever a house there. And so I fully appreciate that you all are helping us, recognizing we don't have the staff capacity right now. But it is important that we move this project forward. And I think you're absolutely right. We need to do major work that's foundational, that sets us up for success as we get more community input on those future uses. So I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think, um, the challenge that we have with saying, yes, this will come from this state bond bill is we don't have an ETA on when that money will arrive. So my recommendation to the council is that because we're going through the budget process now, let's just put it in the budget. So it's recognized as a line item. If that money comes through from the state in FY24, then certainly we can leverage that, but I just don't want to wait knowing that the state moves a little bit slower than the town does when it comes to funding and not have that line item in the budget. So I do think as we're having, we have a budget, you know, conversation coming up in a couple of minutes. We also have another budget work session next week. So if we could just talk through that. Um, but generally it looks like we do have agreement from the council. I saw heads nodding as you were presenting that, um, we're on board with, with moving this forward and just making sure that we have the necessary resources. So again, appreciate you driving this, Mr. Sauer, uh, Mr. Whites, Ms. Bruno, Ms. Green, Ms. McCutcheon, everyone. Ms. Griffin, everyone who's been a part of that and Mr. Giannetti, all the folks, you know, new and, um, former board members who are still there, just helping us move the needle forward. So with that, I think the resounding answer is yes. Um, again, once you can provide us with more structured outline of the cost, that would be helpful in terms of a proposed budget. But again, we'll move forward with just making sure this is in the budget, um, for FY24 since we're going through that planning process.
Okay. Thank you. And we will work specifically on that, uh, line item.
Excellent. Thank you so very much for joining us. I hope you all have a great rest of the evening and sure we'll be talking soon.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the GoGov representation, or sorry, representative with the launch of the program update. So Chief, I don't know if you wanted to, uh, set this up before we go to the representative.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you, Mayor. We are excited to announce that we are fully active with our GoGov, uh, app, which will be a tremendous resource to the police department. And we're fortunate to have Mr. Kevin Strauss here and we were dealing with, uh, I forgot Mel's last name. But it has been a, a tedious pro- process to get done, but it has been a, a pleasure working with these two gentlemen to get this program up and running. And I asked, uh, Kevin if he can be here. He was so excited last, last time to come in. He, he's here again today and I think he brings that same energy again. So we want to just encourage all our residents and staff to download this free app and then, and I will turn it over to Kevin and let him take it from there.
Oh, there we go. I'm like, wait, the buttons aren't working. How's everybody doing? Thank you for the kind words, Chief. I know Mel really enjoyed working with you as well. And, um, today was just carving out a few minutes for us. Just want to kind of show you the finished product. So what you're looking at on my screen is the official MyBladensburg app available for download in both the Apple App and Google Play stores. Um, we, we are ready to go. It's in there. Uh, we could certainly work with the chief or someone in public information on some marketing materials for you guys as well. We have a marketing resource for that to help push the information out there. And, um, yeah, so the idea of the app, let's just take a quick tour. Why would I download this? Really two main reasons. Number one, all sorts of useful, um, town information right at my fingertips and that's all these different buttons. And there's a wealth of different resources here, something like, for example, if I wanted to look at tonight's agenda, rather than Googling the town, finding the website, navigating the menu, if I have the app, I just click the button that says meeting and agendas and boom, it magically opens the screen on your website where all your agendas are hosted. So I can get whatever information I need. And then when I'm done, I'm right back here to the home screen. Uh, same concept here, like you have a bunch of different social media as a town. Now I can easily link to your Twitter, your Facebook, your YouTube, your Instagram. So this is just a starting jumping off point that Mel had worked with the chief on. These buttons are very easily changeable. So as the staff download the app and get in there and play around. If you have any modifications or changes, reach out to the support team at any time. We'll help you make those, no problems at all. The second reason why we'd want to go ahead and download this is for reporting problems and concerns. And that's this big start request button. And what we've done here is work with the chief to identify different types of issues for the various departments that we think residents typically want to report. So you'll see everything on here from graffiti to sidewalk repair, to like garbage issues, uh, traffic congestion, noise, fences. You know, I want to know how to get a permit, all sorts of different items on here. And as the resident, it's so easy for me. I simply find the type of thing that I'd like to put in. Let's say, for example, overgrown weeds. And it asks me, hey, do you have any pictures? I could say no. I could open the camera and start snapping. What we see happens most commonly is people have already taken those photos. So I'm going to grab a couple of these out of the camera roll. And then what the app is going to do is pull the location right off of my photo and say, that's where this issue is located. If for some reason I feel like the address listed isn't quite accurate, I'll tap on it. It will show me this map starting with my current location where I can drag and drop the pin or typing the address to kind of indicate where the issue is. Then you've asked me for a description. So I might say something like the, uh, weeds in the median are overgrown or whatever, you know, it happens to be. I can add whatever detail I'd like. And then I get the option to either A, submit this privately or B, to, you know, go ahead and remain anonymous. So that would be up to me as the submitter. I'm going to go ahead and, um, you know, actually provide my contact info. And boom, it takes me for my submission. I have a request number, number four, one of the earlier ones here. This will certainly balloon up over time. And it lets me know I can always track the status of my request using this track request button. So this is my personal service history. And what I can see here, uh, is that when we just submitted, currently in an open status and we'll get some updates here as the staff works on this. Now, what happened when that got submitted is based on us working with you guys in the setup, someone on the staff side received an email, someone responsible for fixing that type of issue, that looks something like this. And it's basically telling them, hey, you've been assigned a new request. And it tells them the type and where it's located and shows them the pictures. But most importantly has this link that says, click here to access. And that's going to take them right into the staff-facing software to track and manage the work. So this is a completely web-based system. When I click the link in the email as a staff member, I'll go ahead and sign in. It'll bring me right here to a list of open issues that I have to manage. Now I only currently see one issue in here. Um, you know, uh, that I could work on because that's the only one that's open right now. And, uh, when I go ahead and click on it, um, I could see here a bunch of useful information, uh, like my info, because I provided it with the contact, uh, with the request I sent in, the location. Um, all the attachments and whatnot are here. And then as a staff member, I can do a number of different things here. If I have a question for the customer, um, I can ask right through here and go ahead and hit send to customer. Um, and that's going to go ahead and fire off, uh, an email and an automated push alert that will go to, uh, go to them through your app, to which they could respond to the email, uh, or reply to the push alert through the app. And then, um, I can also collaborate with staff. So these are all things we're going to go over in detail with folks during the, uh, training. And that will get logged here. So all this communication is happening. Eventually we're going to close this out and there's a section called reason closed. And this will be text that goes to the resident to tell them why we're considering this closed. And I might say, uh, the grass has been mowed. Uh, please reach out with any future questions. And I'll go ahead and hit update and exit. We'll not only close the request here on the staff side, but also we'll fire off an automated, uh, email and/or push alert, uh, to the customer on the other end saying, hey, your issue's been completed and here's why. So that's, um, where we're at. A nice starting and a jumping off point, like thank you so much to the chief. Put a lot of time in, um, to get this launched on actually a pretty quick timeline. And, uh, we're looking forward to kind of growing and expanding the system with you guys over time. But just one last kind of still image here, MyBladensburg, go download it. Um, it's great. It's a great resource. We certainly want to talk about promoting it and stuff as we move forward here as well. But, uh, yeah, I'll just stop and open it up for questions. But, you know, Chief, thank you again for all of your work on this.
Perfect timing. The timer just went off. And again, that was MyBladensburg. You would think, right? Um, so again, for our residents who are watching, can you repeat that one more time, Kevin?
MyBladensburg. Very easy. Two words. MyBladensburg. And if I go to the app store-
Yeah, I just downloaded it.
Yep. It's downloading as we speak.
MyBlad- and we're going to get you some marketing materials as well that'll have QR codes on them. So that, um, if you see that in the wild, just scan it and it will take you right here to download it.
Excellent. Well, we are really grateful for all your help, uh, and the help of your team, working with Chief Collington and his staff to get this up and running and look forward, uh, to really just using it to better improve our customer service to our residents ultimately and track their requests in a more cohesive manner. So again, thank you so much. Uh, Chief, anything else, uh, that you want to, oh, I see your message. Okay.
I just want to say thank Kevin for his, uh, service. And again, moving us into the 21st century of technology, one of the six pillars, uh, this is right under that umbrella. And I just wanted, the main thing I want the community to know, this is a absolutely free app and service. And it is now a point and click. It's right there at your fingertips. You don't have to worry about getting to your office, getting back to the computer. You can download it right from your app. If there's something, a pothole or whatever it is, you can now, uh, hit us and it will go right into the, uh, the portal and it'll be, uh, assigned to the appropriate staff. And, and the great thing about it, the residents can now follow and they can track their, uh, their complaint or their concern. So we just want to encourage everyone to, to download it and stay connected with MyBladensburg app.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And, uh, hopefully everyone will be sharing this with their neighbors and friends and just, you know, encouraging, uh, all of our residents and stakeholders to utilize it. Really appreciate all the work that went into this. Okay. So at this time-
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Strauss. You too.
Thank you.
Yeah, kind of excited about this app. Uh, okay. So under old business, we had the FY24 budget discussion and tonight we were going to plan to tackle the ARPA budget. Um, so at this time, Mr. Tenelli, are you ready?
Yes, and I apologize. You got to hear me drone on again after three straight meetings, but, um, we'll try to get through this. So, um, I don't have any cool, uh, apps or anything. So we just got to look at spreadsheets. So hopefully I don't bore you all too much, but, um, maybe next year we'll get to the MyBladensburg budget app download or something. So I'll talk to Chief about that. So, or put in a service request so it pops up and send over to Kevin. So we're going to work on it. But anyway, um, I did, um, I want to take about five minutes to show you where we are at with ARPA right now, the American Rescue Plan Act. Try to summarize things really quick. Um, I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully it's the right screen. Everybody see this? That there it goes. Okay. Um, somebody told me it's too small. I'll build up a little bit. Can you see it? Okay? Everybody all right?
Looks good on my end. I don't want to speak for everyone else. Is it okay?
But I answered, you know, you know, for me, you could always-
I know.
Yeah.
Is that a little better?
It's a little small.
Okay. Okay. Um, where are we at right now? Um, I, um, watch my time here. We received, I'm, I'm going to use round figures. Okay. I'm not going to get down into the dollars and cents and everything. Whereas we, the town received 4.9 million dollars. Okay. They fronted us the money. It, 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 it's in our Maryland local government investment pool account. Um, and where are we at right now? Cumulatively, we have spent 2.4 million dollars, um, which is almost one half of the grant. That is as of, that is through April 30th. Um, we budgeted 3.2-
Um, we budgeted three point two million. Just budget this year is two point eight million, okay? So that's not, um, so we spent almost a half, budgeted almost two thirds, okay? Good little, you know, things right there. Um, this year, um, we've, this is what we spent this current year. Uh, I just sent this out today, I send this out every month, um, this didn't change that much, um, but um. The main thing, we still have some items left that are budgeted, which we haven't spent the last two months of this fiscal year. Um, that's what I want to talk about really quick, they're over here. Compensation, uh, we had in the budget, the grants manager, that didn't get filled. So that's why you see that large amount there. Uh, we also have a a portion of uh. Two, three payrolls left to post. Boswick, we had earned seventeen thousand dollars allocated, we spent a little bit on the engineering, we're on the Buckris project, I mean. So we had about ninety-eight thousand dollars left. Housing between mortgage assistance and rental assistance, we only had fifteen thousand dollars left, budgeted, okay? Business assistance, we started off with five hundred and fifty thousand, we hadn't had a lot of requests, um. But uh, we're down to five hundred and, that should be an even five hundred and quarter thousand. Um, utility assistance, we haven't had a- a- any requests for utility assistance because there's there's other programs in the county. That offer that and I I think people are directed there first. Um, especially through the, you know, through the utilities and that they have a contract with the county. It's really through the state, but it's managed by the county, so that's where they're directed first. And the camera rebate program hasn't um, uh, got off the ground yet. But there's about just over eight hundred thousand dollars left, um, of the budgeted amount this fiscal year that has not been used. But we're really, we only have, what, about the fifty days left in the fiscal year, which is crazy, is that right? Yeah, oh my gosh, it's almost done. Um, so, so I feel like it just started. Time flies here in Bladensburg, I have no idea why, it just keeps going faster and faster sometimes. Um, so. Let me show you uh, graphically what this looks like, have to get back here, um. I'm sorry y'all, I'm going to stop this, share this one. Okay, so, let's read this from bottom to top, I got about a minute and a half left on this. It started out with four point nine million, okay? Spending through April's around two point four, that leaves an ARPA balance of two point five million, okay, so remember that. If we spent all those budgeted dollars this fiscal year, we'd have a balance of one point seven million dollars left, okay? Then what we're going to talk about is just over a million dollars in the budget, um. That we have for FY twenty-four, which is up for discussion, again, I see these are placeholders, so we get discussion going. That'll leave just over half a million dollars unused, unbudgeted in ARPA after FY twenty-four. So any changes that we make to this FY twenty-four budget, up or down, it'll affect how much. Of this half million dollar balance is going to be left. Everybody have that? So just think, you know, we got a half million dollar balance at the end of FY twenty-four. Um, so based on what we're looking at for the ARPA budget for next year. So, any questions on that before I get into the ARPA budget? Councilmember Ralph?
Thank you so much, can you go back to the other?
Sure, I got to stop sharing this, I'm just talking to myself. Getting quicker at this now, okay. Is this what you wanted to see?
Yes, so um, with the compensation, Boswick Housing, Business Assistance and Utility Assistance. And the camera rebate program, all of those, what would be the total of that?
Eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, roughly.
So um, my question is, um, would you be able to roll that over or rebudget?
Absolutely.
Those dollars, um, so specifically the camera rebate program, that's not the resident's fault that. We have not gotten that off the ground. Similarly to the utility assistance that we, you know. That we may see arise, you know, COVID is back, you know, we may see a spike. Given especially, you know, summertime, there are, you know, utilities normally go up in the summertime. Um, so some of those things and then we just heard the Boswick presentation. And so we know that they need money and given Mayor James's uh, request to the council. We, you know, maybe we should, just, could we roll those things over? Um, then, um, following up with, I know we put money in for the grant manager. But I know our front office is a little short, well, a lot of short, because that is some of the reason why. Some of these things didn't get off the ground. Do you have room to add? I don't know, a a tre- a treasury assistant or somebody that could support. You in your role, because that's what we're hearing from staff is that, oh, we don't, we're we're short staff, we're short staff, we're short staff. And, you know, it's it's, once again, the residents still have needs and you all are being bombarded with housing assistance. Um, so is there room for some of that compensation to go in, you know, a contractor per se?
Absolutely, that's what the.
And just to be clear, councilmember, are you thinking more of like a temp to assist administratively? Or more so like a finance type?
That's, that's a tricky question because I I wouldn't want a temp handling money, I would want a contractor. Somebody that can be vetted through Mr. Teneli, the police department. I know temps, they are vetted through their temp agency, but I would feel more comfortable with somebody that is. Going through some type of process where Mr. Teneli can really handpick. Who he is, not, you know, there are options through a temp agency, um, but I don't, I don't want to do it quick. And wrong, you know, I would like for him to go through their process and maybe just a contractor.
Okay, thank you for answering that because I know there are specific firms who only do finance positions. And so they tend to have those accounts payable, accounts receivable type, you know, positions, people who that's what they do. Or I wasn't sure if you were more so going toward, again, a higher level type, you know, contractor, but I think that's helpful information. Um, one thing, Mr. Teneli, if I can tag on, is I think with respect to the hundred and fifty K for Boswick. Um, I wasn't necessarily thinking that we would pull it from ARPA, we've done that previously in the current budget year. And wanted your thoughts on um, putting that in our uh, regular budget. I believe it's in Public Works where we have that line item for building maintenance and putting the money there so we can track it accordingly. But then separately from that, um, staff in the front office have been filling a huge gap with processing applications. And handling the customer service for the numerous calls that come in regarding the status. Of rental assistance and mortgage assistance. And so since we haven't paid an actual grants manager. Wanted to ask the council if you would be um, supportive of really providing some compensation to staff. Who have put in the extra hours, I know from um, some of the folks up there, they're dividing and conquering. So somebody's helping with facilitating the calls and dealing with the status updates while others are supporting Mr. Teneli with. Verifying documentation, making sure things line up when documents aren't there, calling people to follow up. So it really has been all hands on deck with that and I do think the staff. They've been keeping up with their regular job that they were technically hired to do in addition to this and I do think we should do something for them. So, Mr. Teneli, I wanted to just.
Yeah, I mean, there is, you know, obviously the the balance here in compensation. And also as Ms. Ralph said, you know, this can be obviously rolled over, just like, just because it's here, uh, yeah, um, I probably should have started off with that. Just because it's here, it's unspent, I should have said, it doesn't mean it's not going to happen, you know, so it's um. Um, and I, but thank you, Ms. Ralph, for uh, you know, to show us that because I don't want people to think, you know, you know, we're not going to do Boswick or anything. But um, I wa- I wasn't sure about the compensation line item, so I'm glad you brought that up and. I I like to have a little bit of time to talk to maybe Mr. Tronovich about that position and, you know, and and just make sure there's no duplication with the grants manager. Versus finding somebody that can, you know, if the, say someone's a grant, a grants manager, they're al- they're already pretty well versed in finance, so. And that's contractual, talking about another contractual, maybe that can be folded into like an FTE, I, um, that's something that we have to talk about though internally first. But I I appreciate that, I mean, that that's a very good suggestion and yet, and yes, we do need help up here, you know, it's uh. As I keep saying, our budget's grown fifty percent over the years and it's still the same. Small administrative staff up here, so it's, you know, um, but it's um, yeah, so I I. Maybe bring that back in the, a next budget work session if that's okay with everybody. Um, but hey, um, let me jump back on here, um, so. Does anybody have any more questions on this? Or a jump, or Mary, you were talking about, you want to bring that back about the. Next work session, maybe about the compensation.
Yes, definitely, I'm just scrolling though to see if you have any hands, Mr. Teneli, I don't.
I know I am too, check the chat real quick, just see if there's anybody. Um, okay, so let me stop this, let me jump back in over here. Um, okay, so let's talk about the. I'm sorry, I share that. And I close it out, okay, so, um, that's fine, I need anyway, one second. Sorry, I've got quite a few windows open, I lose myself here. Alright, so, ARPA budget for right now, it's pretty, um, I don't want to say it's, um. This is up for mayor and council discussion, so I put some placeholders in here, what would make the budget work right now. Um, but this is, you know, what we are going to provide to the community. Um, the big thing you see here, this, um, this five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we did the compensation, um, adjustments for FY twenty-three. For the police department, for the law enforcement officers, um. An increase and also for public works employees and I use the same. calculation to do the FY twenty-four increases for for those same positions as well, so just piggybacked on top of them. Um, why I did that, because it made the budget work, because it made the budget work for FY twenty-three, makes the budget work for FY twenty-four. I just did the same thing, just to start a discussion, um, and also the ten percent here for the uh. For the overtime, I don't think it's going to be that much, it has been been that much this year. And the, and the taxes, um, you can only fund taxes, uh, you can't fund anything to do with pension or anything. I didn't take any workers' comp or health insurance out, so the. Tolanas for public works and uh, public safety is five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, that's just just a portion, so the way it works out is about eighteen percent total of the police department salary. About eleven percent total of the public work salary, okay, just for the police officers, okay? This excludes everybody else in the police and in public safety, um, which is like code enforcement, um, dispatch. Those kind of positions, so it's only for the police officers. Community assistance, I put a placeholder in here for five hundred thousand dollars. Senior citizens projects, that's a three thousand dollars, that's an extra thousand dollars to each one, the senior buildings for their activities. Computer expense, um, we're doing pretty well on computers, I just put this in here for more for the MDTs for the uh, for the police department. Um, they'll get like four MDTs, but I think we are good administratively for computers for a couple of years. And shot spotter annual, this was in the budget last year, now if the. Um, in the ARPA budget last year, I had twenty-five minutes left, so. Um, at the speed camera program and the traffic enforcement programs comes up, maybe this can come off of here and and go back o- over on the public safety side. Under the traffic enforcement, um, just to take the pressure off of ARPA, so. Again, I just need some help from the mayor and council with this and what's your desire to to do with the ARPA funding? So, I'm going to hopefully get some discussion here.
Mr. Teneli, so I I agree, if we could move the shot spotter over. Uh, to leverage some of the funding from the speed cameras. Um, the other thing is in April, I believe that was, we had the presentation from Prince George's County's. Department of Public Works and Transportation regarding the flood barrier project, the pilot project. And they uh, mentioned that if we wanted to move forward, we would have to put in twenty-five percent of the design cost. And then the rest of the funding would be um, for that, the seventy-five percent would be paid by the county. And then they would help us go after the funding from the state for that project. So uh, want to get the council's input on if you would be comfortable pulling that funding from ARPA. Since this is a major infrastructure project that would last multiple years, not that some of the other things. That we're doing aren't good, but with, for repairing that much needed infrastructure, we're protecting people's homes for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Um, and Mr. Teneli, I'm going to the screen, give me a second to start scrolling down, councilmember Ralph. And then I'll go to councilmember Blunt, I'm sorry, I can't tell whose hand was.
I'm a heel, take councilmember Blunt, she was first.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell.
Sorry, uh, my question is online item sixty-two thirty-five, the senior citizens projects. They were getting fifteen each building, did you cut at that?
Um, they are, they are getting fifteen hundred each building out of the mayor council budget. And then we gave them additional thousand dollars.
Are you going to still keep that?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Blunt, I'm glad you brought that up because I did, I talked to councilmember Brown about this because we were walking. In Ward one, I think this was after the budget meeting, um, near one of the senior buildings over there and noticing. Some of the lighting issues and not just speaking about Pepco street lights, but really on the premises. And one of the ideas that we came up with was rather than giving the additional thousand dollars to each building. To help with the public safety of the residents, particularly those who come in late at night. Um, would the council be open to purchasing those mobile lights that are on poles? And giving them to the senior buildings because when we've brought up getting security on site to protect the residents, most of them don't want to pay someone. To be there overnight, but that's not acceptable to just say, we can't do anything, so the idea was really centered around. Making it brighter, so when they come in, because some of our seniors still do work, when they come in at night. It would be up to the tenant council or either the property managers to position those accordingly. If we could just buy two of those, um, and forgive me, I don't know the proper name, I think they're lighting towers or something. That could be placed in those park, uh, parking lots to increase visibility, so. Um, again, when we walked the space at one of the buildings, at the back of the lot, it was so dark. And I mean, my vision is pretty good, so I'm just thinking about older residents coming in late, their visibility, people can hide. When things are very dark and again, um, at least we know the money's being spent for this. And the effort is really to improve safety at those buildings while we're continuing to work with Pepco on the, you know, getting more lights in the community. And also replacing missing bulbs that are out, so just tell me, because you have firsthand knowledge, what do you think about that?
Um, I know, I love it because that extra thousand dollars that they they did get was was fine, but I like it. Our parking area and lot is lit, as we lit, we light ours, but the street isn't, so I don't know if you're talking. The lot or the street in front of the lot, that's not.
So, yeah, that's a good point, so if we provided two of those to Emerson House, it would be at your discretion. And I think too, councilmember, that way you could move them as needed, so people don't just get used to them being placed in the same. Place, you know, location all the time, but um, that that was.
I'm for that, yeah, no, I.
Okay, um, councilmember Ralph?
Thank you, um, so I wanted to respond to what you just brought up, I think that's an excellent, um, that's. That's just an excellent project, um, for the light poles. For sustainability purposes, I, I would it be? So, this is just a question for the council, would it be better to purchase for the building? Lights, um, for, for, I know like for Ward one. Would lights be better, like if we could, well, that's not going to help because they don't have a property manager right?
would lights be better, like if we could, well, that's not going to help, because they don't have a property manager right now. But I was just thinking, like lights are truly needed, like, so the lightbulb, the light pole, I mean, it would be a eyesore, but it'll be there, right? Or would we want to purchase lights and just gift them to the building in a perfect scenario? Um and just in walking Ward Two and seeing, I mean, I'm all for the poles, and I mean, temporarily to put them wherever we need, because it's really, really dark, and speaking with some of Chief Collinson's officers, when they've gone out with um and just surveyed the area. Those are, those locations are where criminals prey upon people, like they know, they drive through, they figure out how they're gonna you know, who, how they're gonna attack, and where they're gonna hide, where the drive-by car gonna come. So, for sustainability purposes, would we want to do both, like to poles and then gift lights to just, you know, as a contributor, or we're just only looking for poles?
Yeah, so what I was requesting was not the lights for the buildings, because that is part of the building maintenance, to maintain that lighting, that's a part of the physical building. And I just wanted to do something that would be easier for them to accept. I don't know what legalities are around us, giving them lights. And then if the lights don't work, and then they come back and complain, because they don't like that we gave them LED, which are more sustainable than something else. So I was more so thinking of the actual poles, because again, using the Ward One example, at the back of that lot, it's very dark and it backs up to woods. And um similarly, at um the building, council member Blunt was talking about, while the parking lot may be lit, sometimes people go around the other side of that building. And so if it's well lit back there, we're discouraging people from pulling back there and doing who knows what. And similarly, uh at Parkview, which has another parking lot, which kind of curves around the building from the meeting last um last Tuesday, that was one of the challenges that the residents were mentioning over there, it's just, it's so dark. Um and if you have to park at the end and you're walking down the sidewalk and around to the front, like you just said, council member, anyone could be back there kind of waiting for you late at night. Council member McBride, thank you for waiting, you're um over to you.
Thank you, um Mayor James, um but yeah, to agree with council member route, um and also council member blunt, it is very dark here at Parkview. Uh and we have a wooded area across from our parking lot, so someone could very well come up that side hill and attack someone from, you know, from coming into the building, and so I don't know who, I don't know, I don't know if they're gonna allow you to put pole lights, but we need some type of lighting. Uh because our lighting, even our very pole that the building has, it works sometimes and it doesn't.
So Chief, do you mind helping us come up with um some options? That one would be easy for them to move around on those properties. I don't know if they come on wheels or, you know, what the case is, but it's something that would be easy, uh again, for the the properties to be able to um to take on and shift as needed on their uh respective sites?
Uh yes, ma'am, uh ma'am, and if I can just um back up to council member McBride's uh last comment. Like even where the the lights are that are dim, so these, these would be great locations to put these replacement lights, these LED lights, because you do need a power source to hook into. So the ones that are inoperable right now, you can just replace these, place, replace those with the new LED lights that are much brighter. And they even have some, and I can work with the the council uh and the residents with this as well. Um they even have some that you put on the back of the building that are motion detect. So when it, you know, it sends someone walking back there, so it's right near window, apartment window. It will just illuminate when it detect the body or something back there, by the body heat, and it would light that area up. That's just another option, or you can just put the continuous lights back there.
So Chief, could you get us funding or pricing, I'm sorry, for the motion lights as well? Um because I'm wondering for the building management or property managers, maybe that would be appealing to them to um to enhance, you know, the safety around their buildings, it up, just to, you know, throw it out there.
Yes, ma'am, and and the uh irony of it all is these lights are very inexpensive, they're very reasonable, you know, just a couple hundred bucks. But just think about, you know, the the price of someone's safety and the peace of mind that they would bring, we're having that brighter light around the perimeters. So I'd be more than happy to work with with the mayor council on this and and the resident.
Great, thank you so much, Chief. And Mr. Tenelli, I'm looking at the time, we're already at six forty-six, um but I feel like the discussion has been beneficial and I'm hoping that we can just continue it, because we do have another budget work session on Monday. Um but one other thing I wanted to bring up to the council is I have started putting together um a proposal for uh just a small program to help our unhoused population in terms of coming up with a plan where we work with local stores for food donations on a weekly basis for non-perishable items that we can distribute. And then in conjunction with that, reaching out to a vendor who has mobile showers. And so what I'm trying to do is see if we can partner with one of our local businesses, if they would be open to, once a week, we can provide you know, that service, food distribution on their site. Um and other resources in order to help uh some of the the residents. And really, the goal is to just build their trust over time, so that we can introduce resources from the county. And eventually move them to a situation where they're not unhoused anymore, but that they're open to getting, if it's mental health services or um housing services, things that move them to a situation where they have housing security. So um I will try to have those numbers by our next budget session, I have reached out and um just you know, I'm waiting to get that information to present back to you all with a full proposal. Council member route?
Um I was waiting for you to bring up your proposal that I thought was phenomenal. Um a couple months ago, you shared that you had a vision for our unhoused population to go around town and get paid maybe on a daily basis about the trash and the litter pickup.
Yeah.
Can you tell us about that? Because I'm all for that one.
Yeah, and. Yeah, but it's all part of the same proposal, just in terms of, again, building their trust. And so if they're out, rather than panhandling, to get them to agree not to panhandle and instead have the town just pay them for picking up trash, that supports public works, and there's some main arteries where we're starting to see more and more of the unhoused residents, again, panhandling during rush hour times. So um I will work to get that information to everyone by the end of the week, so at least you can review it over the weekend and we can talk about it a little bit further, but also to figure out, with, the goal is to start small. This isn't to be a one-thousand-point plan, just to be active immediately. I know um one of the officers is already raising both of his hands and jumping up and downs, and when can we start? Um and it's important to him, because he was homeless at one point in his life, and so he's very committed, chief has given me the go-ahead to work with him on this, and so again, we'll try to get that flushed out. Sadly, the plan got derailed, because as it relates to unhoused populations, there were some other challenges the council was facing. Um and it just, you know, we had to lead to some reprioritization, but I think we can get this back on track and really just put this in front of the team to um vet it and determine uh how we want to fund it moving forward. And Mr. Tenelli, with that, I just talked up another three or four minutes, so do you want to wrap us up, so we can have a brief break between this meeting and the council meeting?
I'm sure that's awesome, but we can't hear you. I'm sure everything you said was awesome.
I I I want that two minutes back, um but the uh Mr. Chalmers said the food assistance program was uh was very beneficial, so maybe doing that again next year as well. Putting that back on the ARPA budget, um and the the other community initiatives, that was for the um trauma kits and everything for the schools. Um so that's not gonna uh come back on there again, but um but uh right now, uh just to tell you where we are with the give me one second, so we, so we get a break here. One second, so we get a break. I can't find it, so anyway, um I'm gonna, I'm gonna spend time trying to find this, um.
Can we look at doing the food assistance on a quarterly basis? Um as uh I sit on cog with council member McBride as her alternate. Um and just the food assistance over time has just drastically gone down as um COVID nineteen uh the state of emergency uh May eleventh um will go away. So a lot of people are losing funding and a lot of the resources that are currently out there are going to diminish in window. We saw that hit when really things opened back up. Um so I would recommend if we could just increase um our efforts, however we do it, I mean, we partnered with a lot of people this time around. We have different partners that we used before, but I think that we should consider on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, thank you for that, council member route, I do agree. Mm-hmm, exactly, so it sounds like there's some agreement with that, Mr. Tenelli. So, next meeting, Tuesday, May sixteenth at five thirty P M.
And if we don't get, and it, I have on here a tentative one on June fifth, you know, just pending on what happens May sixteenth. And the reason is, because there's a lot of time between May sixteenth and June twelfth, so if anybody has any ideas or get updates or anything, that's why I put this tentative date in here of June fifth, which is a week before we actually strike the, that's on the calendar, is strike the budget. So, um that's all I have, Mary, so um that's a good stopping point for me.
Excellent, well, thank you for walking us through that and answering all of our questions. And I know we didn't get to the the project list, but maybe we can add that in as we talk through the funding, so we make sure that the town priorities are all accounted for. Whether it's the, you know, security camera program, just all the important things that we have prioritized uh as a council. And then um just briefly, wanted to mention, in the current FY twenty-three budget, we have secured a annex I'm sorry, an annexation specialist. But we did that with the understanding, we were coming up on the end of FY twenty-three and agreed that we would go to formal R F P for FY twenty-four. Uh if we felt that was beneficial, so just wanted to flag that. Uh we do need to make a decision and then vote to go to R F P for an annexation specialist. And so, let me just see, is that on under financial business? It is not, but that is a financial matter and really should be on there, so we can table it until the June meeting. Um or we can just amend the next agenda to include it, whatever is the law of the council. So I'll just bring it up at that time, once we're approving the agenda. And with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by council member Brown, seconded by council member route, any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I, any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much, we're adjourned.